Good evening, everyone. It is February 19th, 2020, and I hereby call to order our February meeting of the Village Tively Board of Trustees. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Evening, Chief. All right. We will begin with the village clerk's report. Clerk Verona, please.
Okay. Well, there, Verona, I think I'm pleased to say this is the lighter side of the clerk's office as experiencing as of late. So I am quite pleased to just give this little roundup. Four hundred and twenty-five trash tags were sold, two payrolls processed, and still consistently, deputy clerk busy with, you know, planning and zoning and a couple of assorted projects throughout the village.
Great. Thank you very much. Trustees, we'll move on to approving minutes. We have the January 15 regular meeting minutes, January 30 special meeting minutes, and February 12 workshop minutes. You've had a chance to review these. So I've asked for a motion to approve all three sets of minutes.
A motion.
That was the deputy mayor, seconded by trustee Schneider. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Moving on to the treasurer's report. After this month, we have three months in our fiscal year, which ends May 31st. This month, out of the general fund, eighty-three thousand, three hundred, excuse me, eighty-three thousand, five hundred, thirty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents, and that is also our grand total, eighty-three, five, thirty-six, thirty-nine. Is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
So moved. Second.
All right. That was Cole, followed by Azaradi. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Treasurer's report is accepted. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved. Second.
That was Schneider, followed by Major. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to a zoning report.
Okay. The code enforcement officer has reported us for December and January that one building permit was issued and reviewed, two building inspections were performed, zero complaints were submitted or investigated. Zoning violations issued, seven garbage cans from previous citations on January 4th. Municipal searches requested and completed, one fire inspection scheduled, zero.
Thank you, trustees. Azaradi, we're still working on this garbage can campaign, so, you know, we passed a law, it's fifty bucks if you leave your can out, but also further down the law, if you're a repeat offender, your cans can be confiscated, which is an annoyance. It's annoyance for us, it's annoyance for you. So bring them in. They're only supposed to be out the day of collection, basically. If your collection is on Thursday, you can put them out the night before, and they have to come back in like Thursday night, so they could go out Wednesday, come back in Thursday night, and not supposed to even be there on Friday. And so we, the code enforcement officer is enforcing that, and we are unfortunately having to confiscate cans. It's been a couple of weeks now doing that, so.
Seems to be a very steep learning curve.
All right. So I want to let the public know, thank you for coming this evening. This was one of our shortest agendas, and I have to let you know it's actually shorter than it is on paper because Panda has decided to reschedule their presentation we were expecting tonight for next month, which leaves our agenda at budget mods and accepting and approving Tively Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals training hours. So this is the time we ask for public comment on agenda items, so there are two, and if you have anything you'd like to say about them or ask, we'd be happy to hear from you. All right. We'll jump right in. Trustees, we went over these budget mods. There are quite a few. As I explained in the workshop, we're getting down towards the end of the fiscal year, so we really start to move the lines back and forth against each other so that we end up clean at the end of the year. We have modifications where we're incurring costs for the various grants we've got out there, and of course those will be reimbursed to the village. So our total budget mods here roughly are about thirty thousand dollars worth of shuffling the money back and forth between lines. Is there a motion to accept these budget modifications?
So moved.
That's the deputy mayor, seconded by trustee Azaradi. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I'd just comment that it's really good that we've got enough experience with these months because right now we've got a lot of moving parts, funds being spent on them being reimbursed.
Yes. Yeah. All right. Next, we have a document showing that our planning board has gotten some training recently. Let's see that. Two credit hours of training. All right. Is there a motion to accept that our planning board has received two hours of training?
So moved.
Second.
All right. That was Cole, followed by Schneider.
Can we just make a special shout out to Lisa Schwartzbaum, who's going to master on racking up credit hours? Indeed.
Interesting. My data numbers are, that's a little different. Well, that's good. In that case, yes. Shout out to Schwartzbaum for the most training.
Yeah. Go Star.
All right. We've had a motion and a second to accept these, this training hours. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The next board meeting will be held Wednesday, March 18th at 7:00 here at the historic lots de place de hall, preceded by a workshop at 6:00 PM in the mayor's office, and we have a regular workshop on March 11th at 7:00 PM. And right now, I'm going to tell you about two other important dates. Hopefully, more and more people have been signing up for the village email list. We have almost 300 people on that list now, but that means we're not at full participation. So that really is the main means by which we communicate to residents. Yesterday, I sent out sort of a long email about a local law that we've drafted, so at this point, it's just legislation. It's a number of small but important zoning changes, and there are two big projects that are driving this. One of those is the long-held dream of expanding the Tively Firehouse. We believe the time has come. I know the chief believes the time has come. We're ready for it. You know, obviously, that fire was a real setback, but, you know, we've seen the community, and certainly in the fire department, we've found some back with a lot of vigor from that. There's a lot of support in the area, and we feel we've got the momentum, so let's shoot the moon and get this done. So there are a couple zoning changes related to that. The village does own a parcel west of the firehouse. It's a long parcel that kind of wraps around the back. That's actually in the R-15,000 residential, you know, district. One change is that that would be moved to the general business district so that both parts, the new and, or the old and new part of the firehouse, will be sitting in the same zoning district. That's what that's about. I'm going to explain these now, but there's going to be a chance to have a fuller explanation. I'll get to that in a second. The other thing is St. Celia's. We've all been concerned about the fate of that for a couple of years now, two years perhaps, is the former Catholic church just down Broadway here. That is going to be purchased by Helen and Bryce Martin, who we know from the village, from the hotel, Tively Corner Restaurant. And the idea is that they're going to make it into a community and cultural space. We have worked very hard with them to, with them, the diocese, the town, to put some covenants on the property that they are okay with. Do you want to speak to those for just a second?
Yeah. I think for me, the most exciting one is facade easement, which, which basically means that we're preserving the historic character of the building, which is a contributing feature within the landmark district. And Helen Martin is very into the property itself and the, you know, the site, the trees, whatever. So she too was excited to just sort of make sure that that stays the same.
So, thank you. So when they set up this community cultural space, that is currently not a permitted use in the R-15,000 zoning district. So that's our second change, which would be to add a definition of cultural facility to the R-15 and the GB for parcels that have frontage on Broadway. So that is basically, you know, from the river out to 9G, just on Broadway. So that's the second piece of our local law. And the third piece is to add a new definition, municipal use, to all zoning districts, and I'll tell you where that's coming from. We have had to do things in recent years like site a water tower, site a temporary firehouse, and in both of those actions, it's been very challenging because we don't have anything like municipal use in our zoning. The idea is, you know, there's another voracious legal process called Monroe. I'm not going to get into that right now, but there's a way to do it. It's awkward, it's time-consuming, it's expensive, it's inelegant, and it's not the kind of thing that you should be doing every year, you're Monroe-ing something. So the idea is to say, hey, you know, we've seen it already, it may happen again. Tively needs to be able to make municipal, you know, choices, decisions that are for the public good. If we had had this in place when we had to put up that temporary firehouse, it could have gone up a lot faster and cheaper. The only other municipal use I see on the horizon where this would be applicable is the waterfront park. You know, that we've been working on for 30 years, but it's, it is actually coming closer to us. In fact, this summer, we're going to be doing the shoreline stabilization project, and once that's done, the next thing is to build a park. And a public park in that zoning district is currently not allowed. It's the land conservation district that was going?
It's the, uh, yeah.
It's the LC.
LC.
And what is the LC?
I'm pretty sure that's land conservation.
Right.
It's not the LD.
It's not the LD.
I think we have too much zoning.
So, yes, we've had zoning on the.
But, yeah, there's basically no allowable uses because it's, you know, since environmental area, so.
Right. So that is a quick and dirty overview of the zoning changes. Because it's complicated, here's the schedule. Next Tuesday night, the 25th, 7:00, hopefully 3rd floor, because hopefully we'll have a lot of people. It's going to be an information session. We're going to have copies of the law there, and incidentally, those will be available at the clerk's office. That went out in the email. If you got the email yesterday, there's a link to the local law, so you can read it. The legislation will be explained till we're blue in the face next Tuesday night. So if you have questions, come. We want to make sure everyone fully, fully, fully understands it. That will not be the night to comment on, we think this is great, we think this is terrible, you should do this, you should do that. It's to understand. The opportunity for the comment will be the following week. Wednesday, March 4th is the public hearing on the legislation. So if you're really into this, you should come next Tuesday and next Wednesday and follow this. You know, we believe that both these projects, the Martin's Cultural Center and expansion of the firehouse are very, very positive things, but obviously, we want your engagement. We want you to understand why we're changing the zoning. And so information session on the 25th and public hearing on the 4th. And then we have our regular workshop on the 7th and our regular board meeting on the 18th, so we'll be seeing a lot of each other. With that, let's move on to trustee reports. Trustee Azaradi?
Um, well, speaking of the fire department, I went to my favorite wine store and met another fireman who talked about a fire in Ludgerton, at which there were 31 companies.
There's a lot of trucks.
There were a lot of trucks.
31 companies, but there was 31 trucks.
But he had a great praise for our own fire chief in that endeavor, and it's one of the things that's phenomenal about this neighborhood.
It's a team, it's not one.
Well, it is, yeah. But he mentioned that because he was talking to it. So the, it's just a wonderful thing. When we had our fire, they were there here to help us, gave us a couple of trucks. It's really a wonderful culture that's developed among fire companies to make that happen. You've heard about the progress that's being made on the fire company. I was thrilled to see the new beams there, the roof being opened up, went there the day it opened, and there's an acrid smell there that we're probably glad is going away. I just received the, on another note, the fire company has a length of service award program, which we've had since 2008. It grows slowly but steadily. It now has about $175,000 in it, which is divided roughly among 20 active firefighters, and it's invested about 50/50 in stocks and bonds, and seems to be behaving like this, looks to be. That's about it.
Thank you, trustee Azaradi. Trustee Schneider, please.
Absolutely. So the Tively Village Court charge volume summary report for the month of January. Charges received, total 17, and charges disposed, total 36. $3,607 was collected and remitted to the state comptroller.
Thank you. Trustee Cole?
So the zoning review committee, we have been working for quite some time on revising the site plan law. We are very close to having an actual draft of that law. That will be coming before the Board of Trustees at our next month's workshop, so we'll be able to review that. So that will be on the radar in our March calendar for hopefully being able to move that forward to a public hearing and get the site plan law resolved, or updated, actually. In terms of short-term rentals, we have had several meetings about that, both with the zoning review committee, but also with our mayor and our code enforcement officer. Also, it may be in March, but we have a lot on our plates, as you've heard, with new zoning things that are in the works, so it may have to be early April, but we are looking forward to having that short-term rental forum and discussion fairly soon. So those are moving forward, and we'll let you know the dates as soon as we have them.
Thank you, trustee Cole.
And just one other note. Susan had mentioned in her report the excitement about seeing the work at the firehouse. I have to say, I drove through Tively, and I went past seeing the drainage well being cleaned out, and I looked at that on my left, and then I looked on the right, and there was the work at the firehouse, and it's, it's really exciting. It's really fun to see all of that work going forward in Tively. So just thanks to everyone who's been involved in it.
Great. Thank you, trustee Cole. Deputy Mayor, Major.
Okay. So great things going on at the library, as always. I encourage everyone to go to, was it Tively, TivelyFreeLibrary.org and check it out. Potluck this Friday night, I think it's, I think it's the 5th one. It's a joint venture between Village Tively and Bard Center for Civic Engagement, and it's up on the 3rd floor, Friday night, 6:00, Burning Dish. It's, it's great. It's such a fun event. You know, we've had as many as 80 people come to these things, and they tend to be split between students and non-student residents, and I don't know, it's just, it makes me think of how I felt embraced by the community when I was a student, and I think that, you know, that may have been easier 30 years ago when there were, you know, the numbers were different, right? But this is, this is an opportunity to really, you know, get to know each other. And we've also had a lot of new people moving into the village who, who have started coming to these, and just immediately, it's like a, it's like a, you know, being loaded into a charm can and fired into the village when we come to these, so.
Are you making quiche?
Of course I am.
Excellent.
I will be making quiche.
It's worth coming for.
And then more delicious things and community. Next Saturday night, not this coming Saturday night, the following Saturday night is soup night at the Almendorf Inn, and that's an annual fundraiser for Historic Red Hook. It's 10 bucks, you get a couple of cups of soup. I think we have 16 or 17 different kinds of soup this year, and that too is just lots of fun, and we hang out in the 1760 tavern room, and 6:00. Also 6:00. There'll be live music, and that is tons of fun. In terms of our natural resources, I would encourage everyone to get out in the woods now. It is the best time to be out walking around because there's no snow, it's a little muddy. But you can really see the historic landscape when you go out, when there's no foliage of any kind, and it's really, it's, it's pretty neat, like go and walk along the trails in the bays, but still, watch out for ticks. They're still alive. I got one off the dog last week, so. And also, there has been a fisher lately who has been heard out in the bays.
What does a fisher sound like?
Uh, well, I've heard it described as either a woman in distress or a car with a bad water pump.
Oh.
Or some combination thereof. So, but they're three-foot-long weasels.
Yeah, I've seen them, I've never heard them.
Yeah. Terrifying. So watch out for that. Do we have Election Day coming up?
Yes, we do.
That's right.
April 28th.
Okay.
March.
March.
March is right. Right?
Right. Well, I think that's all I got.
Election Day is which, March?
18th. Thank you.
18th. So it is meeting day.
It is.
Yes. All right. So that's right. That will happen before we actually meet again in this room, in this setting, so.
Isn't usually Tuesday?
Come out and commit to what's happening in your community by exercising your right to vote, no matter which way you go. Staying home is the worst thing you can do, so.
These people work hard, and they deserve to be voted on.
Yeah, so we've, we've all been seeing the construction going on, the reconstruction going on at the firehouse. We're obviously very excited about that. They seem to be moving pretty quickly, but maybe we'll hear some more from you gentlemen in a minute. They are supposed to be finished late April, early May, something like that.
Told possibly on March.
Yeah.
So we're hoping for that.
It's going quickly. And then, of course, when these fine folk get to move back into their building, then this thing can be removed from our parking lot, which will make life easier for everyone in this building, especially the library.
You have it till August.
Yeah. I'm not going to let you keep it a week longer than we need it. Sorry.
Really nice try that one.
It is leased to August.
Yes.
Roger, slower trees.
On a, on a serious note, I would be remiss if I did not speak on the shooting incident last week, last Tuesday night on Clay Hill Road. I'm sure most people have heard all about it, but two individuals were involved in a shooting. Neither are Tively residents. It took place on Clay Hill Road, a little after 8:00 PM on a weeknight. The Tively Fire Department was there quickly, and all the police departments were there, Red Hook, state troopers, county sheriffs, deputies. We understand that the person who was shot is going to make it, which is a great relief for everyone, and it was, I believe, the next morning that they were able to complete their manhunt and apprehend the assailant. So I just want to remind folks, you know, these things don't happen frequently, certainly here, but we all need to be mindful, and certainly 911 is the thing to do if something like that should ever, God forbid, happen in your neighborhood. Generally, we do contract with the Dutchess County Sheriff's Office if it's not an urgent thing. You would call 486-3800 for any sort of general policing, but if it's something urgent, certainly like what happened last week, 911 is the thing to do. And, you know, if you have, you know, concerns, questions, anything like that, do contact me. I have been meeting with some residents, members of the neighborhood, and just talking about, you know, talking through sort of this, what happened, and how we keep our community safe and healthy in the way it ought to be, so. Again, I just want to remind folks that this local law is coming up. It's important, and this is so we can do two things, expand the firehouse to the west, another truck bay and a second story, new facade, might look a little nicer than it does now, certainly when it's burnt and torn pieces.
Right across Marcy Shelter.
Yeah. So, you know, this is, this is a very early stages. We're going to have some sort of designs to show you, like an image of what we think it could look like, next Tuesday on the 25th. And, you know, we don't have money yet, but we got the idea, and the idea's a good one, and we're going to find the money together over, you know, as long as it takes, but. So information on the local law, February 25th at 7:00 PM, and then the public hearing on the 4th. Do take a look at it. We really want you to understand why these changes are being proposed. And with that, are there any other things the board would like to talk about before we open it to public comment? Folks, we're ears here for you.
I know Tommy had mentioned a little while back about the SCOTPACs, the grant that we have received. We actually received those the other day. They came, serviced those, so we'll be putting them in service in the next couple of weeks. That's basically it. You know, we've taken in quite a few new members since the fire.
Excellent.
We've been very lucky in that, sent a bunch of them through into your firemen. Bunch, there's four of them in EMP class right now, a couple going through fire police, so a lot, a lot of training going on, lots of new people coming in, so definitely in the right direction, so.
Personnel.
Yep. And again, thanks, thank you, thank the board, you know, you guys have been, big support, has been very, very busy, so, you know, I think we're moving in the right direction.
Absolutely. It's a pleasure for us. It's literally the least we can do for our volunteer firefighters.
I think it's a testament to the character of the village, and everybody who lives here that we're able to take something that was really a catastrophe, right, and turn it into a catalyst for new growth and progress forward. So congrats to everybody who's been part of that process.
Great. Mr. Chrissy?
Yeah, just want to touch on the OSAC program that Susan was talking about. There's a total of 50 people on that program right now. Out of the 50, I'll just break it down for you. Eight of them are now leaving or have left the department, eight people. So the actual numbers that are there would be 19 people did not make the points system, so you guys know where you stand as far as money-wise goes, and 23 people made the points. So it's almost a 50/50 split type thing there, pretty close, but just to show you where we're at.
Are the points calculated every year?
Yes.
They are.
Every year, you have to make a minimum of 50 points.
And they're based on attendance at meetings and.
Meetings, training.
Officer.
Calls.
Attendance and incidents.
Positions that you hold, it is a whole, you can make 125 points total, but you only need 50 to qualify, and.
Does it occur that a firefighter would qualify one year and then not the next year, and then qualify the next year, and so the years you don't qualify doesn't count?
And you don't get a bet, you don't get the points.
And the range, it's, it's usually between 20 and 22. 22 is a good year, 20 is a more typical year.
It's usually pretty consistent as far as names on that list.
Yeah.
You know, those guys are going to show up, or the guys are going to show up, you know, I mean, it's, like, yeah, we've taken in a bunch, and, you know, they seem very, very dedicated, you know. We've got some pretty high call numbers for new members, which is really good, so.
Great.
And the purpose of this program when it was initiated, it's because it's very difficult to actually award dollars to firefighters because there's a real, in the law, this is voluntary, non-paid agency, so to get a monetary remuneration is a complicated thing. The purpose of the program is recruitment, so it's very good.
I don't, I don't think a lot of people come in there for the.
The recruitment and retention.
Yeah, I don't think that that plays a big deal, but it does, it keeps a lot of guys in, you know, the guys that are interested, that are interested, they're going to make the points.
Make a difference.
Like I said, eight people left, we brought in eight new ones right now, and I guess there's a couple more that have to be interviewed, so the eight that left.
there's a couple more that have to be interviewed, so the eight that left, we got eight that replaced, so we basically stayed pretty flat, except put a couple up, we may be getting in next month. All right, that's good, that's a good thing, yeah. That's another topic, speeding up and down Montgomery Street, that seems to have slowed down considerably.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. We, you know, after our last meeting, we scheduled a number of AM patrols that were on both Broadway and Montgomery Street and, you know, throughout the village, but specifically for like AM speeding around the school bus pickups, and I know that there were a number of tickets issued, so.
Oh, yeah, like I said, a lot of the cars are out of state cars, they're just up and down that street, and now it's, it's slowed down considerably.
Well, we'll keep our eyes on it, and then for the...
Absolutely.
Tivoli's nice, there's no need to rush.
Yeah, you don't have to rush through here. It's small enough, you get through here.
Just cruise through the village, take it all in, you might see someone you want to say hi to, it's like, no rush. Any other public comment?
What is happening with the bridge?
Uh, which bridge?
The one in Lash, Lash.
Uh, the one in the town of Red Hook.
Yes.
Let's call the supervisor.
Yes.
What we know is, what do we know? Well, it's not fixed yet.
Yeah, basically, there is, there are design challenges for that bridge. The idea was to create a culvert that would, you could drive over. Unfortunately, the culvert moves because it's sitting on soup, so now, they are engaging in some revisions in terms of the engineering design.
Yeah, it seemed like they started to work on it, and then it just stopped.
Yeah.
That's the reason.
I guess their design was not the right one.
If it was flamed, they screwed up.
Yes, obviously, you know, Tivoli is served by that road and bridge quite a bit, but it is actually in the town of Red Hook, so, you know, all of us should speak to our town board about that one, you know, hopefully soon.
Let this supervisor know that you're concerned.
Sorry, Robert, yeah. Other comments? Okay, want to thank everyone for coming, and on that, if there's a motion to adjourn?
Totally.
That was the deputy mayor, simultaneous with trustee Cole, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 7:37, we are adjourned. Thank you all, and I hope to see you again soon.
Thank you.